I call to order the February 9th, 2022 meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to silence your cell phones and electronic devices. Hopefully you should see up on the screen or before you came in, a link where you can access any of the documents that we'll be using today. It is one of those short bitly links on the slide for our agenda and for all the presentations for those who'd like to view them. We also mentioned last time that you could access a closed captioning in different languages through the BlueJeans system, and we're working maybe up already having a link on our website with some step-by-step instructions for how people can do that. Ms. Wagner, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Bolton? Mr. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Jones? Here. Dr. Moxon?
Here.
Mr. Murawski? Mrs. Weinberg? Here. President Lindy?
Here. Thanks, everybody. We have a wonderful and full meeting today, so we're going to try to keep things moving pretty quickly. I did want us to start with a very quick, no more than five-minute review of what this board said our priorities were over our first six or so weeks this year. And we won't read through all of these, but you can see them on the slide, which is we want to make sure we're moving the superintendent search forward specifically by announcing three finalists by February 10th. On COVID, we want schools open for in-person learning starting on 1/24 and continuing a school-by-school approach going forward. On the third one, I hope that board members can jump in if I'm wrong about this, but in my conversations with you all, we're going to hold on having a separate communications priority until maybe a little bit later, where one of the real important things early on was announcing those finalists and how community members can be involved in the screening process. We have a fourth priority about making sure new board members feel welcomed and supported and have access to the information they need. And then lastly, we have a fifth priority about enrolling our board in some kind of longer-term governance training. And so just in this very first part of the meeting, and I'm going to ask for Rob's help here as we go through this, my understanding is that we're looking, I think, green on all of these, but I just want to check to see if anybody sees something or knows about something that I don't. I think we certainly cleared that finalist announcement. Our schools are back in person. I asked our returning board members to reach out to all of the new folks to check in about how they were doing and making sure that they have everything they need. Hopefully you heard from someone, or if you didn't, you'll hear very soon. And I think the, you know, Brandon, maybe do you want to say just a second? You've done some great work on five. Would you mind just sharing a quick update?
So right now, we put together some ideas, Mike and myself, around areas in which the board can just work to develop in a more cohesive unit as we go forward, especially with three of us new members being on the board. And so the focus is really going to be to take the language and the ideas and bring those back to the staff to put together an RFP so that we can then reach out to have our vendors come in to express interest with those goals in mind and those targeted interests of board development.
And if anybody, I know I've shared some feedback and some thank yous to Brandon and Mike. If you, if you have, if people have feedback or questions, how long do they have to get that to you?
So the goal is to have all the feedback in by the 14th so we can then put that together in a cohesive message to the district leadership in order to put together the RFP. So next Monday.
That's great. Thanks, Brandon. Anybody disagree with the greens? Does it look right? Hearing nothing? I'm going to assume we're good?
I didn't hear what you said.
Vice President Jones, I was asking, does anybody think those should be colors other than green? Like, are we off track on any of those? Ms. Bolton?
I think they should be orange.
I like that. I like that. So we'll make that for next time. I'll take that as an assignment from Ms. Bolton to have some HU Day in our board priorities, which is excellent. Fully support that. Okay, so what will keep us moving? I think as, before we get into the presentations, the very last thing I wanted to say on this was there's just a lot moving on the superintendent search, which is priority one. And I want to just say again, we had over 190 people nominate either themselves or someone else to serve on these community panels that are going to take place tomorrow. We're going to have a panel of students, a panel of teachers, civil service staff, principals, a panel of parents and community members, all of whom are co-creating the questions that they're going to ask our three finalists in this search tomorrow. I think this just speaks to the commitment our board has to engaging the community at every part of the search. And I want to say thank you for everybody who's been involved. Some of these panels will be livestreamed tomorrow, and I'll work to make sure, I might ask for Krista's help, that we can get some links out to people who would like to view those. Okay, so we're then now ready at this point. We'll hear from our science curriculum folks in our first presentation whenever they're ready.
Thank you, Rob. Okay, good evening, Board of Education, interim Superintendent Emma and Professor Wagner. We are very excited to present our recommendations for science adoption this evening, and I am joined by our curriculum manager Liz Wolf and our science teachers, who have spent a year, they started thinking about this last spring, actually, a year building consensus around high-quality materials to adopt. So Liz?
Hi, everyone. My name is Liz Wolf. I am the Science Curriculum Manager for the district, and I want to thank you for the opportunity for myself and the science adoption team to go through the adoption process and to be able to speak to you this evening. Before I introduce and hand it over to the team, I just wanted to take just a few minutes to recap where we currently are in the district before talking about where we would like to go and move forward with. Slide, please. You can see that in this decade, the top 10 fastest-growing occupations, as identified by the U.S. Bureau of Labor and Statistics, we're looking at the Navy side here. They are, every single one of them, wind, turbine service technicians, nurse practitioners, statisticians, health services managers, all of these jobs here are directly related to science and STEM. The future is with science, not without, and we believe that we can better support our entire community through an adoption for a high-quality science curriculum. Next slide, please. We wanted to also take a minute to review our scores for the past several years. Just a reminder that science has state testing at the fifth, eighth in biology, grade levels in courses. We do not have scores for 2020 that was canceled at the state and federal level due to the onset of the pandemic, but you can see that we are below the state average for each of these courses and grade levels even before the pandemic. So we just wanted to reflect on that and wanted to move on to the next slide, please. The last adoption for science was in the year 2001, so it was 21 years ago. We do have evidence here of materials from the last adoption. You can see that the teacher supports are on VHS tapes, the McDougal-Lattell books are not connected to current standards, excuse me, and the materials, the hands-on materials for quite some time, we need replaced. We know that curriculum, while we do have supplemental resources currently in place from our teachers and from various community groups like the Newport Aquarium, we know that a high-quality curriculum has four components: content, resources, strategy, and measurement or assessment, and we currently, we need all four of those at the moment. Next slide, please. We believe that we can prepare our students for these job opportunities in these high-growing fields. We believe that we can raise our scores and we can get our community jazzed about science through a curriculum adoption, which will open the doors for equity and access for all of our students. We believe, and truly believe, that through this process, we have identified and are recommending truly high-quality curriculum that is on grade level, and we do believe that this is best for our students. I will, I want to take a second to introduce the team to you. So next slide, please. We have Ally Miller, our curriculum council chair. We have Daphne Adams. Sarah Boris. Tammy Jackson. Denise Pfeiffer. Molly O'Donnell-Goode. Caroline Burns. And the two representatives that couldn't be here this evening due to prior appointments are Eric Isaacs and Diana Schweitzer. So I'll go ahead and hand it over to them, but wanted to thank you again for the opportunity to go through the process. We really do, we have good recommendations for a high-quality curriculum and are excited to present our findings to you.
Hello. Before you, before you start, you all can come down. I feel like you're hidden behind the screen. Come down and we can see your beautiful faces that you spent a year. Can you all come down? Working on, and can you talk up? It's just a little hard to hear you.
Yeah, so much better. Now I can see. I saw a hand, someone was raising a hand. Thank you.
Okay, so as was stated, our curriculum council met last year and was discussing what kinds of things were our look fours, and we came up with these four as our final must-haves that we would like to have in this new curriculum. They were approved by the curriculum council. And the first one is to have a strong hands-on component that's inquiry-based, excuse me. The second was that content should be accessible to all students, gifted, ELL, students with disabilities. We wanted our students to be able to see themselves within the curriculum and identify with engineers, scientists, and other people that represent diversity within the curriculum. We wanted to have race, disability, and gender represented within the curriculum as well. We found a curriculum that has purposeful alignment to real-world connections or phenomenon-based learning, and this is also evidenced by ed reports. You have a copy of the ed reports information. Amplify, which is the elementary curriculum that we've chosen, is rated as yellow. However, this is the highest-rated elementary curriculum for science on ed reports. Inspire, which is the high school program that we chose, has not yet been rated by ed reports. Next slide, please.
Yeah, actually, could you go back a few slides, please, to the pictures? Yes, right there. Thank you. This fall, I piloted Amplify with my two sixth-grade classes. Students learned about metabolism, excuse me, by solving a mystery. They were presented with a fictional patient their own age with certain symptoms. They met virtually with a doctor to determine a diagnosis. They had to learn about the body to be able to do this. In one of the pictures up there, you can see some of the students modeling the chemical reaction that happens in the body during cellular respiration to produce energy. At the end of this unit, students participated in a science seminar to present their findings and debated with each other whether or not they were correct based on their evidence. And I'll tell you, they did not want to stop debating with each other. After that unit, there was an engineering internship. The students were given the task of designing health bars for the victims and workers of a natural disaster. They had to choose the ingredients and make sure that the bar tasted good, it was cost-effective, and that it met the metabolic needs of their chosen audience. Naturally, after this process, the students wanted to actually make their bars. So we did. We got the ingredients. You can see in the other picture, the students made boards. Each student was allowed to invite an adult, another person, to come in to taste their bars. They really enjoyed doing and solving real-world science and learned a lot. Next slide.
We wanted to look at diversity regardless of race, gender, identity, and socioeconomic background. We wanted to make sure everybody was represented in the curriculum through the text, images, the videos, and any biography or any information about scientists that was in the curriculum. We wanted our students to be able to see themselves as scientists and engineers. Along with that, we wanted even more. We wanted to make sure that the community of Cincinnati Public students and families knew that we valued them and their feedback. So we had a community adoption event. Next slide, please.
To engage our families, we hosted a preview event of all the curriculums we were piloting at the Cincinnati Museum Center. The curriculums did hands-on activities that the kids were allowed to take home. They did demonstrations, and they answered all of the parents' questions. There was over 1,000 CPS members at this event, and they gave their feedback using a QR code. The curriculums that we are recommending were well-received by the community at 67% approval rate. Next slide, please. Student voice because CPS students matter. We had a large amount of ninth-grade students not only complete our survey, but we had representation from many of our high schools. The data showed 60% of our students want to take chemistry and 50% wanted to take astronomy before they graduated. Based on these results, we are increasing the rigor of our current science programs and excited to offer a new course, astronomy. We'll be partnering with the Cincinnati Observatory and implementing a program called Star Parties. Star Parties are morning or a late-evening guy-watch events. The observatory will bring out telescopes to these schools, and the students will get to use them to explore not only stars, but planets and other space phenomena. Thank you.
Next slide, please. This is our high school proposed pathway going forward. To increase the rigor, biology has been moved down to the ninth grade, and every student would be required to take and pass chemistry or physics. You can notice that chemistry and physics will be offered during both the 10th and 11th grade so that they have some more opportunities to take AP classes, college credit plus classes, and CTE classes when they get to those upper-grade levels.
Next slide, please. The curriculum that we chose has four buckets to it. The first bucket is content. All the content is aligned to the NGSS standards, and all the content provides real-world experiences for our students. Our resources have many, many things in them, such as hands-on activities and teacher resource videos. The pedagogy changes from our students just knowing things, but knowing how to apply things and do things. And the measurement, there are so many resources, such as formal assessments, summative assessments, and performance-based assessments. Next slide, please. For our adoption timeline, in March, all of our teachers are going to have early access to the curriculum via digital resources. March through May, our science curriculum council will look at our pacing documents to ensure that there is feedback from all stakeholders. And then June through August, teachers and administrators will be able to come to PD to learn more about our new curriculum resources. Next slide, please.
Well, we know that we're successful at the end of year one. At the end of year one, we would hope that we can see the, an increase in the amount of science instruction at the elementary level. We will increase student achievement and accelerate student growth, decrease learning gaps in student achievement, and at the high school level, we will see an increase in the amount of students who choose to take science electives, AP science courses, and science CCP courses. Additionally, we would increase family and community involvement in their students' science learning by having the Star Parties, having family science nights, and maybe even having a science fair. Next slide, please.
The adoption committee has three parts for plan for communication. Teachers are going to have ongoing biweekly memos, curriculum and principal newsletters on Schooler G and Curriculum Council. For the parents, there will be robocalls and parent centers in the schools, and for the community, there'll be social media, websites, and community events. Next slide, please.
So in conclusion, we just want to bring it back to our, that all children, regardless of circumstances, have access to a high-quality, on-grade-level curriculum and instruction, especially for science. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you all very, very much. Do we have questions from board members?
Well, I have a question, a comment and a question. So I'm a chemist by trade, and I am super excited and geeked. I was sitting over here, like, I'm not looking through my papers, I'm looking at you guys because I'm excited. So thank you for all this hard work. It's super, it is very important for me to have the diversity, not just race, but gender, just all of our areas of diversity represented. I have a question for you all, though. The Star Parties was exciting to me, and the addition of astronomy was very exciting. I think the student voices matter. If we give them what they want, they will engage. So let's give them astronomy if that's what they're wanting. I do have a question regarding remote and hands-on learning. How would that work? How does the curriculum kind of adopt to if we have to be remote? Would the teachers create videos of the experiment? And I say that because I was, that's how I got a Snapchat because my kids created it for me so I could do the experiment and they could watch it. How would that work? Have you all thought about that?
Absolutely. So one of, that is definitely one of the characteristics that we looked at. And in Amplify, which we're recommending for K8, and Inspire from McGraw-Hill, which we're recommending for 912, they both have instructional videos for, not only for teacher prep, but also that can be shared with families of the, not only preparing for the hands-on lesson, but the, the actual activity and hands-on lesson itself.
Vice President Jones?
I don't have a question, just a comment. Thank you so much for the report, and I think the student achievement committee looks forward to getting updates on where the, how this is progressing in terms of implementation. And I too love the idea of teaching astronomy, and I wish I could come to the class, but I'll come and visit.
You are always welcome. Yes, ma'am.
Any others? Ms. Bolton?
Yeah. Thank you, and thanks especially to all the folks that worked on this so long. Really appreciate it. I know you do it in addition to everything else you do. I have a couple of questions. Are all of our high schools equipped with chemistry labs?
They do all have labs, yes, ma'am. The size of the labs varies from school to school, as well as several things within the lab from school to school, but every lab, every school does have a lab.
Every, every school has a chemistry lab. That's great. And that's an improvement from a while back. It's great. Are students able in the ninth grade to take something besides biology if they're interested, or is their schedule just so full that they only have room for one science?
Biology is the prerequisite to any advanced science courses, CCP courses, CTE courses. So biology is the intro for high school for all of the other science offerings. They can take electives at the same time as biology, but for example, they couldn't take chemistry at the same time because biology is a prereq to those other advanced science.
It would be a prerequisite to, or all of these or some of these? I mean, environmental science or?
It, yes, ma'am. It is the prereq for all of the other advanced science courses.
And so that's, that's important why they're taking it.
Now, there are some electives that they could take in addition to biology, like zoology and botany, of course, yes.
That's good. That's, that's what I wanted to know. I'm just a little concerned about our 10th graders having to pass either chemistry or physics versus, I don't know what it's called, a natural science or something like that. Seems like we're setting up a problem because thinking thousands of years ago in high school, chemistry and physics were kind of pretty hard for me, and, but biology or botany or human physiology was not. I'm just concerned, is it, you know, is this going to be like an algebra issue about whether or not the kids can succeed early on? I just, obviously, you all know better, but that's my concern, that two years from now, we're going to be sitting here with kids not necessarily being able to pass successfully chemistry or physics.
Yes, ma'am. So we have had the same concerns as a committee, and we have talked about it, and we have curriculum council support and steering support, and we realize that when you increase the rigor of a program, sometimes you have to put measures in place to remove the barriers so the students can still access the science content and the learning. So we do have planned and budgeted for TI graphing calculators, a full class set for every chemistry and physics teacher to assist with the math. We also are working with Johnson &amp; Johnson and GE Aviation for every other Saturday optional tutoring at three high school locations that will be throughout the year as well. That is free and available to any CPS student who would like chemistry or physics and extra support.
Thank you. Again, I have grave concerns about that, just for any of our students regarding, you know, an interest in chemistry and interest in physics and the whole math piece that goes apart of that. And so I register my concern. And then finally, it's a great curriculum, and you've done a wonderful job. I'm just worried about that early sequencing. And are all of the available AP courses listed here that are related to science in these 11th and 12th grade?
Yes, ma'am. And they are included in the adoption as well.
Super. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Others? Mr. Craig?
So I think, you know, again, I think all of us are really excited to see this, the work that you've put in and the efforts to really build the educational programming around science in a 2004, 2000, where are we now, '22? You know, methodology. And so I wanted to somewhat throw a little bit of a softball out here and ask, kind of, can you talk a little bit about the need to do that earlier science, that K through eight as well, and the importance of how that affects that high school science that Board Member Bolton was, was talking about there? And so maybe just giving a little bit of a importance of why that K through eight is so important to build up and strengthen?
So absolutely. So this is one of my passion moments. So you just let me know if I talk too much. But science is one of those subjects, especially at the early grades. The students love science. You can see the engagement increase, the wanting to write and read increase. They are, love science. Science is also one of those content areas that it Science is also one of those content areas that it builds upon its progression. So, you know, if, you know, we just start teaching science at the later years, they have missed all of this foundation. Science is very heavy in vocabulary as well, and that vocabulary is learned through hands-on activities, labs, experiments, and things. And that really does need to happen from kindergarten all the way up. And I know in pre-K as well, they are also piloting science curriculum as well. So we are looking for a pre-K through 12 science support.
I think that's great. And I just want to say, I think the idea of taking science and making it something that you consistently, you're building your knowledge around and building your knowledge up as you go through the grades is something that is so important as the students were to move on beyond high school years. And so I appreciate that thought.
Thank you very much. Ms. Weinberg.
Yes, I'll just quickly add, thank you so much for all of your hard work. I think this is very important for our students, and again, thank you.
That's great. Ms. Mott, and then I'll add one thing at the end.
Thank you. Thank you for a great presentation. I do have the same concern as Ms. Bolton, so I want to make sure with this curriculum adoption, it's not necessarily, that decision has to be made tonight. I think we need to go back to the table. I want to make sure that we're not putting up barriers for our kids to succeed. So I would like some more information on why that decision was made, but I think the selection of the materials to move our kids to be scientists and excited about science is absolutely wonderful. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I want to just echo my thanks above and beyond people's already busy professional and personal lives, so thank you. I think I was particularly excited to see the Ed Reports information, it was very helpful. And the sixth to eighth is, you know, very, very high marks. I think, I, this is just partly from my own trying to make sure I understand how all this works. The part that was less than green and was yellow, it seems like it was yellow because it had to do with alignment to next-gen science standards. And as I understand it, Ohio is not on the next-gen science standards. So we shouldn't be particularly concerned about a lack of alignment because it would be aligned to something that isn't what we're doing. I wanted to check that that's right.
That is correct, yes.
Okay. And then I also wanted to, I'm not an expert on the next-gen science standards, but if you have like a minute on what the differences are between Ohio's standards and the next-gen science standards, I would be very interested to hear what that is.
Absolutely, absolutely. So the main difference is the rigor and the call-out to what explicitly the student should be able to do. For the Ohio standards, concepts appear later on, and as well, they are more of content statements, what the student should be able to know, not what they should be able to do. So the NGSS standards really takes that, the learning that they should know, and make it more action-based. So some of the standards would say, construct an argument with evidence that they directly pull from the lab experience that they had. So very explicit things that they should be doing, and then the concepts appear earlier than they do with the Ohio standards.
That's helpful. I think it just, it makes me wonder, should we be looking for something that is aligned to the next-gen science standards or not so much?
Both programs that we are recommending do align with the next-generation science standards.
Okay. I was just reading the thing that said it partially aligns, but maybe it's enough, like on the Ed Reports piece?
So the Ed Report, yeah. So for the Ed Reports piece, for the aligning, for the aligning to NGSS, for the Ed Reports piece, what Ed Reports is really looking for is that phenomena-based connection, so that connection to real-world connections. So when we look through Amplify and we, you know, we did our due diligence, we looked through, you know, manuals for every grade level, there are real-world connections, and it is very applicable to what they should be able to do. Like, for example, there was one particular unit where students had to find out why one side of an island was drier than the other side, was so directly climate. And while it is a real-world problem, it's not necessarily something that, for this particular unit, that our students may have direct experience with. And that is why that particular section is a little bit lower.
And that's helpful. And I want to be really clear, I trust you all to have done the research and to have the recommendation, and I truly love, I think, the commitment to rigor. I really love the commitment to diversity and kids being able to see both themselves and a diverse representation of people and careers. I'm very excited and want to say thank you.
Thank you all for your time and support.
Yeah. So I think then we'll keep moving. Thank you, everybody, for being here very, very much on the science curriculum adoption. We're going to hear next from Susan Bunty on a health and safety update.
Noon. Ooh. Good afternoon, everyone. It's nice to see you. This afternoon, we're first going to start with our health and safety update. Next slide, please. I'm so, and we're focused on the health and safety component of our strategic plan. Next slide, please. So this is my favorite slide of the whole night, 20 consecutive green dots, woo-hoo! So we have seen significant decreases in overall cases of COVID, and we continue to monitor this on a daily basis. We haven't had this many green dots in a very, very, very long time. So as you remember, we, on the next slide, we were in a very different situation as we came back to school, as we were looking at how that increase in Omicron really affected us in staffing. Next slide, please. But now we're in a much better place. So you can see on Monday, the seventh, was a conference day, so we didn't have students. But on the Tuesday, our absences have overall decreased and are pretty much holding steady right at that level. We still do have staff members who have been affected by COVID and will continue probably to be, but knock on wood, right now, we see that we are in a period of much more stability. Next slide, please. That also impacts our subs, although our sub rate is holding steady right around that 60% mark. Because we don't have the number of teachers out, we are able to cover our buildings. Next slide, please. The good news is, we have lots of people who are wishing to join our CPS family, so we are very excited about that news. This weekend, we held a job fair here in the midst of snow and ice, but we were thrilled to welcome 34 new employees to our team, and they are being onboarded as we speak. Last slide, I think. And finally, we have upcoming vaccination clinics, one at Reese Price, actually, two, the 17th and the 10th. Please note that these were rescheduled due to the weather. And the Winton Hills Academy Vaccination Clinics as well. Also, an update on the next slide from ODH. As many of you are aware, we are no longer differentiating between community versus school-based exposure. So in the past, there were different guidelines for both of those groups, which was just incredibly confusing for everyone. Now we can use masks to stay for all of our students despite where they were exposed. So students can continue to come to school as long as they are asymptomatic. And that concludes the health and safety portion of our presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Bunty. Do board members have questions? I had just one, which was on Slide seven. I just wanted to make sure I was following the numbers correctly. Is the, you want a high fill rate, right? Or do you want a low fill rate?
You want a high fill rate.
So is it, and this is showing the fill rate for subs, and it looks like it's going down, like from 65% down to 59%, but I might be misreading that.
No. So the week of, you may remember, we moved to remote. So we had higher sub fill rates when subs could help students learn while we were in that remote period. No, you're absolutely right. But the backstory of that was it was during a period of remote.
I got it. And so that we've been building the top of the funnel so that as weeks go by and these people clear their background checks, we should expect to see that fill rate come way up.
Yes.
But it takes time because we got to get people hired, background checked, and in the system.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's great. And you feel like it's moving, what I heard was it's moving in a great direction.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Well, I think Susan can stay put, and we're going to go to the talent presentation next, I think.
Yes. So this afternoon, we're also going to spend some time really talking about the talent department and their strategic vision for the next few years. Next slide, please. So this is under the part of our strategic plan that really talks about how we optimize our capabilities. Next slide, please. And one more. So the vision for optimized capabilities in terms of our talent work is to really make sure that our staff are highly effective and deeply engaged to ultimately impact our students. So almost a year ago, we were really seeking to get better in this area, and so we engaged audit firm, the Urban Schools Human Capital Academy, to really come in and to help us think deeply about what are the national best practices in this work. So with their support, on the next slide, we developed approach using what we fondly refer to as the wheel, that have four main components, including performance excellence, strategic staffing, talent management and development, and culture and total rewards. These four components line up to two of the pieces of our overall vision around really making sure that we impact our staff, again, to be as effective as they possibly can be and to be engaged in the work. Next slide, please. So as you can see, we have three-year goals laid out with this being the baseline year. And to really impact overall fill rate under being highly effective and making sure that our hiring practices are such that we are really recruiting people of color to be able to support our students. Also, under that deep engagement piece, deeply engaged, we want to make sure that we are measuring that and that we are retaining our employees. Next slide, please. So what is our current landscape? We know that right now, 49% of all of our school staff are people of color, which includes 27% of our teachers and 68% of our principals. In terms of engagement, 5% of our teachers leave their position on an annual basis, and 9% of our CPS staff overall leaves, and these are based on 2021 numbers. But how does this compare nationally to where we are as a district? Nationally, 21% of teachers identify as people of color. Nationally, 52% of school districts are experiencing severe staffing shortages. And we know that nationally, 8% of teachers leave their positions annually, while 31% of those in the education field leave their jobs. Next slide, please. So we know that it's important to help and support employees during each phase of the employee cycle, and by doing this, this is how we will be able to meet our goals. Next slide. So the very first component of the overall strategy is that of performance excellence. And just to highlight a few things, this year in 2021, we're really working on how we structured that team to be able to provide seamless supports to schools. Next year, our focus is really going to be on an overall equity audit to make sure that we are being intentional about our practices. The second component on the next slide is strategic staffing. And so if we look in this area, we can see that we are really, this year, taking advantage of student teachers. We know that we have many student teachers in our district who wish to stay with us, and so we are encouraging that. During the job fair this past weekend, I know that we offered a blanket contract to an intervention specialist who's coming to, back to Cincinnati to be close to her parents and joining us from the Chicago area. So really paying attention to that. Next year, as we've discussed previously, we have to pay attention to what our teaching pool looks like. Our universities have told us, gone are the days that the 22-year-old comes bouncing out of school, ready to be a teacher. They've shared with us that nationally, teacher education programs have lost significant enrollment. And so how do we get those mid-year career change folks into our ranks and encourage them to join CPS as a future teaching home? If we look at the next slide, in terms of talent management and development, this is where we really focus in on career ladders and how we help to support people through their journey. So one such example is dining services. Talent has really worked closely with Jessica Shelley's department to focus in on how I can come into the district as a food service, dining services employee and have opportunities throughout the organization to be able to grow and develop. Also, for next year, really focusing in on identifying and training many of our staff members in implicit bias and how that impacts us as leaders and as employees. And the last component of the overall strategy for talent and development is that of culture and total rewards on the next slide. So this is really one of the most important levers for retention. We know that if folks feel connected, they feel that the culture is a positive one, they remain connected and stay within the organization. So on the next slide, you can see what we are up to in the talent world. Right now, we are knee-deep in recruiting for next school year in terms of teachers. This is hiring season, so we're looking forward to our upcoming job fair and the recruiting activities that are happening currently. Next slide, please. And finally, there are many things to celebrate within talent this year. You can see many of them listed above, but certainly, we want to acknowledge being named one of Forbes Best in State Employers, the recognition that we recently received for the Healthy Business Council of Ohio. That's a large part due to the work with TriHealth. And also with some of the work around pipelines. One of our first cohorts of para-to-teacher pipeline graduates this year, so some of our very own paras will be able to be teaching in our classrooms next year, which I am so, so, so excited about. I know we all. Next slide, please. So that concludes our presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Bunty. Questions from board members? Ms. Bolton?
Yeah. Thank you. Singularly, this is so important. Appreciate all the work. It would be good perhaps also to see the diversity numbers or at least the demographics of the central office, or what we call central office.
Sure.
I know we didn't break down to every employee group, which are kind of interesting, but it was good to see the ones that we saw. And then the other thing, I'll just, again, eave one note on evaluations and exiting people that may or may not want to exit. Really would like to start to see a little bit more about that in all the areas. We have very rigorous evaluation tools for administrators and teachers, and I think everybody. And it would be good to see the value of them if there is properly, proper implementation. But thank you so much. This is great.
Thanks, Ms. Bolton. Mr. Gregg.
So again, I think, I want to echo Ms. Bolton, that this is really great information, and I appreciate the goal setting is really a big part for me because I think that puts us in alignment with how do you achieve these things? You have to set the goals first and then start to work towards achieving them. I did want to ask one question. I know you mentioned it a little bit with regards to kind of creating the pipeline programs. And I know we talked, you spoke a little bit about that with regard to education and teacher-specific, but there are other areas and other fields in which the same pipeline programs could be implemented to build a stronger minority, a stronger diversity within the applicants. And so I didn't know if that's more expanded beyond just teachers?
Right now, we have definitely a pipeline built out with our student dining services so that when folks enter our entry-level positions, that there is a pathway for them to grow and develop within that department. within that department. We are also working on the same kind of work with our custodial staff right now in terms of how folks enter and then how they can continue to grow within the organization. We also are doing succession plans here in central office. So how do we have folks move from specialist to associate to manager to director? And really thinking through what skills are needed in each of those areas and what competencies are needed and then training around those competencies.
That's awesome. And I love that you said succession planning because that's what I teach all these wonderful people that you see during the week. I think that's great and I think that's part of how we build diversity within our hiring ranks is if folks feel they have a place to go and know how to get there. But great work.
Other board member comments?
Comment.
Ms. Weber?
Yes, I wanted to know, what is the estimated number of para-to-teacher for the pipeline that you have currently? I know you mentioned next year, they would be graduating. What would be the estimated number?
So we accept 25, 25 paras into the program every year. They complete the program at different rates depending on how many credits they entered into the program with. We fund that through a grant, so it's at no cost to the employee. I'll have to get you the exact number. I think it's six, but I don't want to misquote. And then we have rolling numbers in upcoming years.
Thank you.
Dr. Mavat?
I just have a couple of questions. Thank you so much for this work. It is definitely needed and very much appreciated. I do have a couple of questions. Are we doing a, I think, let me preface my statement with, I think that referrals and relationships are probably the best and probably easiest way to build capacity. And so my question surrounds that. Are we doing a district cultural audit of our existing staff members, particularly teachers of color, to find out where their experience is here? And then to see if maybe they can refer some of their children or their neighbors to go into teaching and then use that referral process as maybe a mentoring program? I'd also like to know, what are some of the numbers of diversity with respect to teaching and support staff of our surrounding districts? What do those look like? I know the national average of teachers is going down. You know, we're losing teachers in the profession. But I'd also be interested to find out what is, what do our neighbors look like? And what are they doing to also increase particularly their teachers of color? And then my last question, and I guess these are probably all things that you can come back and talk about. Do we do any exit interviews of our existing retirees to find out what is, that worked, what didn't work, and where we could be better?
I think I have it.
Okay. Ms. Bunty, was there anything that you were trying to get in response or no?
So I think I can come back to you. In terms of exit interviews, we do them now on a regular basis. It's part of an actual electronic process, but we also reach out to employees every, it's a randomized number so that we make sure that we have a representation of that. In terms of the actual referral process, I'm going to say no, not yet to the first part of that question. I think that's a great idea, though, and I will certainly look into that. Under Title IIA, we are allowed to give referral bonuses. So that is something that we are definitely looking into for next year. Lots of organizations do that when they refer employees and if they remain employed with the organization for a certain amount of time, then there may be something. So we're certainly looking at that.
The last one was just a cultural audit of our district, maybe building by building. But just to find out what the culture is here and how we could look at, is that part of the reason why we're not getting applicants to come in? Are there gatekeepers that are preventing the applicants to go from application to actually interviewing? You know, some of, what are some of the barriers that are internal that perhaps we could reveal?
Wonderful. I had a couple. Vice President Gents, do you want to ask? You're good. I think this is just very exciting, Ms. Bunty, and thank you for the work, your team. My question was about whether you all have the resources you need to do everything you want to do. This just feels like an area that making some strategic investments makes a lot of sense. I would ultimately defer to the recommendation of the administration on any of these things, but we're coming up on budget season. And I was just thinking about, you know, do we, does there need to be more here to do some of these things? If so, do you think we can find it? Like, should, and even if you don't know today, we can, we could talk about this in the coming months, but, but I wanted to hear any quick reactions you had.
No, I appreciate that question and that comment. It's something that we're discussing right now with our performance leadership team as we work through our budgeting.
Thank you. Ms. Bolton, I think had one other quick question.
And he'd have two questions in a row, asking you to spend more money, but spend more money from a standpoint, Treasury perked up on that one, spend more money on hiring bonuses? Or, I mean, the district is extremely generous about hiring bonuses. It's extremely generous in granting seniority to try to get people to come here. And I know we try not to do that, but we, in this world, we're lucky that it's in the contracts that we can do that.
No, you're exactly right. So in the past, again, through those Title IIA dollars, we are permitted to offer hiring bonuses in shortage areas. And so particularly in the areas of math and science and special education, we have offered those, those bonuses in the past to be able to get people through the door. As you know, those are very, very, very competitive areas. We want to be able to attract the very best candidates.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Can we do anything else for you, Ms. Bunty?
Well, that's very sweet. No, thank you for your support.
Okay, great. I think before we transition to transportation, I just wanted to follow up with interim superintendent. Do you need a vote on the curriculum adoption or anything related to that tonight or no?
Yes, we can do a vote, but I wanted, that's why I wanted to just make sure with that vote, I want to do further investigation on the chemistry and physics requirement at 10th grade, but that does not affect the vote on these textbook adoption.
Okay, I'm up for whatever you would find most helpful. So we should vote tonight to approve the curriculum?
Yes, please.
Okay. So maybe we'll close that out. Is there a motion to accept the recommended new science curriculum from the curriculum committee? Treasurer, Wagner, is that, is that, do you want to say that again or are we okay?
I thought we used to do it in the previous years in the treasurer's report. I'm not really sure, to be honest.
That's right, yeah. We have always brought it to the board for full adoption. So they go through the process of curriculum council, staff, and then the board for approval.
And so do we need a separate motion from what's in the treasurer's report or is it in the?
Yeah, it's not in the treasurer's report, so you would need a separate motion.
And that's, and for the interim soup, I mean, we could, we could do that right now or we could wait to have it in a treasurer's report. I think it's whatever you'd find more helpful. We'll do it tonight?
There's something that you prefer?
Just, I just don't recall what process we've used in the past, so I'm unsure enough to disagree.
Vice President Gents?
I think maybe what's tripping me up a little bit is that it's just been our standard practice that if we agree by general consensus and it moves forward sort of in sequence to the treasurer's report where it is adopted by vote of approval of the treasurer's report. That's, that's why I think I was hesitating when we asked them for a motion. So my, my suggestion would be stick with current practice unless we decide to change how we do that, I would say.
I think that sounds quite reasonable. I just want to check with Tiana, does that mess you up at all? Do you need anything different from us? I want to make sure we do what you all need.
Yeah, I thought that was the process. Yeah, it's, and I'm saying that because it sounded like by consensus, everybody was saying, yes, let's move forward, so.
I think that's fine unless anybody has a concern.
That's fine.
Okay. All right. I think what will happen next is because everybody's supportive, it'll come forward in a, in a next report. Okay, thank you. And we're going to keep moving to our last presentation, which is on transportation from this line.
Board members?
Hello. So, I'll wait for Robert to bring it up. What we've done is put together an infographic for you. We're hoping this is a little bit easier to read and follow. I just wanted to highlight some things that are on the infographic on that first page. As you know, our, our, we are now under the optimized capabilities. We are looking to improve our transportation services. And we already are doing some things that are exceeding what the state requires. And if you look at the first two rows there, you'll see that the state requires kindergarten to eight transportation, transportation services for students who reside more than two miles. And as I've mentioned earlier in other presentations, we currently provide transportation to students in kindergarten through sixth grade who live a mile or more and then for seventh and 12th grade who live 1.25 miles or more. If you flip to the next page, at the top, we've included a section that says what we've heard from stakeholders. And we've heard concerns about our seventh and eighth graders, student riding the metro. We are going to be continuing to partner with Metro in some manner, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. We want to make sure that we're offering more consistent services, on-time performance, accurate, accurate pickup and drop-offs, less time waiting between enrollment and actually getting on a route. And then board members also wanted to share their learnings as well. So for next year, our three main buckets of work, we've completed the RFP process. We are now into that phase of optimizing our yellow bus routing. And then we are going to continue to research logistics of establishing our own small CPS fleet. So if you look at the timeline below for next year, all, all of the areas with checkmarks are things that have already been accomplished. We actually met with sort of executives on February 7th, had a very productive meeting. I believe you all have a copy of my notes from that meeting. Interim Superintendent Tiana and myself met with a board member and the chief executive officer of Metro. We have begun to inquire of search firms who could help us do a national search for a director of transportation. So that is an ongoing process. We have an RFI that's going to be posted for the optimization study. And the goal is to have, submit that to the board this month for approval of that vendor contract so that we can get started on those simulations for how we can get seventh and eighth on the bus while minimizing the cost of those additional kids on the yellow bus. And of course, this all falls into our strategic plan of optimizing our, our capabilities. Finally, the goal would be to submit a final transportation plan to the board. We're hoping it will look more like a business plan. And of course, we want to give the board an opportunity to share their learnings along the way at each of our meetings. So there are some key decisions that we're asking the board to make. And we will be including data to help you with those, make those decisions. Some of the data has already been submitted to you through questions that you've asked of the transportation team. But one of the key decisions is, do we just go to state route? I mean, to the state minimum or do we continue to do what we're doing now? How do we effectively partner with Metro moving forward? Looking at adding seventh and eighth graders on the bus through the optimization study, is that going to be feasible? And having our research inform the cost benefits of having our own CPS fleet for fiscal year 2024.
Only thing that I would like to add to the presentation is that we had a very productive and successful meeting with Metro this week. We did talk about the pricing. And so they will honor the $315 per child as they've done in the past, which I think is huge. So I did want to share that, and that concludes this presentation, and we are open for any questions.
Thank you very much. Interim Superintendent and Ms. Wana. Vice President Gents?
On the plan, the timeline for the plan, March, April 2022, which is like right on us. I'm not sure if I have a full understanding about the impact on the healthy start times. That, that, that's a separate time, and I'm looking at Ms. Bolton because I think you've asked the questions before. Do we, have we discussed that? I don't know if the committee has discussed it or what's, what is going to be the impact? Because I don't feel like I know anything about overall impact and any thoughts about how we move forward.
I can share that we are in those discussions now and we will maintain the healthy start time at the high schools. So it's really in between the times of 8:00 and 8:45. So remember, a few months ago, we had four high schools come in and they couldn't start a little earlier. Well, within the margin of a healthy start, it was, we were in that segment of 8:00 to 8:45 for next year. So all of our conversations with our bus vendors and Metro is around that time slot.
So I think if I'm understanding, there's been no real shift from that.
Correct.
Okay.
Now, it will affect those schools who wanted to go a little earlier because of their after-school activities, but it's not going to be a 7:15 start, a 7:30 start.
And those times will also be included in the optimization study. In their algorithms, they can include start time, pickup time, drop-off time for each school. And they look at the address of the kids and the addresses of the school. And they're able to plug in all those variables in their optimization software to be able to tell us how many routes we would need to be able to accomplish that.
Thank you. Other questions? Ms. Bolton?
Can I respond to the healthy starts? Because the administration's been very helpful in understanding in part why our healthy starts were so late and frankly became unhealthy if the kids were going to be staying beyond the school day. And initially, the healthy starts got to be so late because of Metro's schedule. And then, of course, we don't have Metro's schedule because we don't have the extra routes. So for this one year, ironically, we had the situation where the healthy starts, some of them were not healthy. But the administration explained, I think, the finance, that one of the reasons too was not just the, the metro routes, extra routes and what have you, and them being ready to do their other business as well. It was the fact that we had certain students attending our high schools that required special transportation that couldn't be accommodated. So that was another reason. So if we, if we now are able to address those kids' special needs and special effort, whether it's our fleet or somebody else, then we can actually have healthy starts that are better than they were years ago throughout this whole effort and, but not as crazy as they have been this year. And I think, Superintendent, is that correct, if we can adjust?
That is absolutely correct, yes.
And get those kids to school. And nobody explained that to us until you all did. We appreciate the fact that that was one of the layers that was making it happen.
Thank you.
Do you want to share other questions you may have? Do you want to share other questions you may have, Ms. Bolton? While you've got the mic?
Careful what you ask for.
I'm ready. Let's go.
Be ready. First, I want to say that the administration has been super helpful in the information and digging through all the things that need to be dug through. I think to Vice President's point about this is coming up, I think in many areas, we already, I think, have some ability to have a consensus very quickly because the board has been working on this endlessly, as we can, some of us can testify. And certainly, the Finance Committee's been working on it endlessly. And I, I think it's great to talk in terms of the working with Metro because we cannot get our high schoolers to school without Metro. But I think with Metro, I'm glad they're willing to go back down on their, or at least stay at the current price that they're charging us. But I think we have to be able to assert ourselves that we want some form of the extra routes. And we, and not what we used to have. I understand that that's maybe not possible for them. And I understand that. But it seems to me, even with the new law that says the charter kids can't be on the public transit with, if they have more than one transfer. I think at the heart of the Metro use for us and communicating to SORTA, Board, and City Council and everybody is to say, you know, if our kids that have a direct route, no transfers from their house to a high school, they should be riding just the regular pass. That makes perfect sense. But how we assume the responsibility for these transfers is very scary to me for our own liability and our own responsibilities to our policy and the kids. So I'd like to propose to Metro that indeed we would like a mix of the extra routes and a easy pass, and then go back in part to the activities pass. The go-anywhere, anytime is a tremendous liability and responsibility because we're only, we're legally responsible to get the kids to and from school, not to the job, not to shopping, not to the friend's house. That is something important. And as, as the administration pointed out, we bought an awful lot of passes that people don't use. And that's a perk that we can't afford for any of our kids because somebody wants to use it once or whatever. So, you know, it's not a means test, but it should be a needs test. And so I think we ought to have a whole package to sort of present to Metro, and I'm glad you're speaking with them. And that would be part of it. And the yellow bus, I think we are there that the seventh and eighth graders are going to be on yellow bus unless their families choose to put them on Metro to go to high school because there was just so much concern about, especially the seventh graders. Everything we're going to do is going to cost much more money than what we're, it's costing now. Just even yellow bus is so much more expensive than Metro. The, the expense of, of what you're talking about, a fleet, I am completely in favor of having our own fleet of 10 or 15 buses, yellow buses, and having a fleet of vans. From a standpoint of the McKinney Vento folks and JFS, extremely expensive what we're doing now, and it's not as reliable as those kids deserve. And for all of our kids during the school day, you know, again, as we said last week, we need field trips. We need athletic competition stuff. And it's my understanding, at least the last I heard from the Holocaust field trips, it's 800, excuse me, it's 580 bucks a bus. And so it really inhibits our instruction, our enhancement. It inhibits the athletic plans. It also inhibits how we can get our kids to our vision centers or our health centers for all the things that that has to happen. So I really would like us to really pursue the two fleets, smaller fleets, to serve what we need to do. And I, I know we're going to be talking about this in finance again. And thrilled that the Superintendent attends, as well as Connie and the Treasurer, of course, who's our touchstone, if you will, for all of this. But I think we heard a board member, a new board member, say, we got to get this right this year. And I think that's true. And I know in policy, we are rewriting policy that is more representative of what we have. So I won't, I won't belabor it, but of course, I have 50 things to say, but some of this we can do in finance and some of it we can do whenever. But I really feel strongly that this is going to cost a lot. But if we have quality service, I'm willing to pay the money if it's going to work. I hate paying the money for something that's not working. But again, I compliment the administration for the, how shall I say it, the transparency of the information. I really do.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Anything, Ms. Alana or KPI, Interim Superintendent, you'd like to share in response?
No, I took copious notes for Member Bolton. So I just wanted to, just wanted to state that the data we give you is a snapshot in time because, as you can imagine, transporting students is fluid, right? It's contingent on your enrollment and your withdrawals and then just life changes for our students. So, so the data that we give you is just a snapshot in time. But I took copious notes. You know, we, we will go back and, and make sure that when we put our plan together, we look into some of the things that you've mentioned. And then, you know, just let us know what you, what you need from us. We, we want this to continue to be very transparent. We greatly appreciate your input. And the questions that you've asked us has really challenged us to look at our data and look at the services that we're offering. And, and we agree with you, Dr. Moffett, that things are going to be, are going to get better. We, we do really believe that. We, we feel like we're really doing our homework, the team is. Can't wait for this optimization study to start. I think we're going to learn a lot from that. And like I said, our goal is, you know, we, we've got limited resources, so we have to work within those constraints. But if I can maximize our output within those constraints, then I, I feel like we're doing our due diligence.
We've heard from Vice President Jones and Ms. Bolton. Other board members have any questions they'd like to ask? Dr. Moffett and then I have a couple.
I do have a question. How, do we have a number for the impact on siblings? If we do yellow for seventh and eighth and Metro for the high schools? Do we, do we know those numbers?
We, we have not actually dug that deep. We can, what we can do in the simulation is we can look at it both, both ways. So one of the things I, I believe that we were looking at doing is offering the seventh and eighth graders, if we can afford to do it on the yellow bus, and if they do have an older sibling, give them the opportunity to say, I'd rather ride the Metro with my sibling. We have not looked at the other way, putting their older sibling on the yellow bus with them. But we can, you know, with the simulation study, we just say, can you change these parameters and give us, tell us how many buses this is going to be? And of course, by them doing that, they tell us how many routes we need, which is how many more buses we're going to need. And then the cost of those buses is going to determine the overall cost for that particular simulation.
Thanks. I think for my part, I wanted to do two things. One was say thank you for all of the research and hard work. And there are so many moving parts. And I'm grateful for the clarity on the timeline. I think for the routing study, for the ongoing negotiations with Metro, all of these things, I think, seem really good. I love the search firm to find a director. I think really good things. Thank you. I think, I wanted to just make sure that the, I think role clarity was good on administration versus board. Because I think, what I think, I think we're on the same page. I just want to, want to check that, you know, you all will come to us, right like you have on this timeline, with what you think the best possible setup is for kids, for families, for our finances. And you will have looked into all the conversations about should we have a fleet? Should we not have a fleet? Should we have what start times? Should we, should we be pushing harder to get the restoration of some extra routes or not? I mean, I think one of the things we have from the fall is a really clear picture of what the pain points are. Because you all collected such good information from principals, from families, through those surveys you shared with us earlier. And, you know, we can all offer our suggestions or ideas, but I think it's your call what you want to put in that plan. And then any of us are free to say, yes, I'll vote for it, or no, I won't vote for it. And so I think if you anticipate sticking points on anything, you know, we've got several months to work through them together and to convince us that whatever you're going to recommend, like, is the right thing. But I think you're, you're in charge of what, what that proposal should look like. And, I mean, we have to say yes to it. And I think, but, but, but looking forward to seeing the work that's going to happen over the coming months to that end.
Absolutely. We appreciate that, and we will be prepared to come to the board. We are also a part of Board Committee. So in, Transportation has done some presentations. So that's why here where it says where we have heard from stakeholders, it has board members share their learnings. So we welcome board members to share their learnings. We've been doing that in board meetings. But if you would like to send us some information as well, if you are not participating in that particular committee, we are open to that as well. But as soon as we get the optimization study, we will have a clear understanding of the costs. So right now, it's in that gray because we need to do that optimization study. So once we have that. But what you can consider right now, that I will leave you with, is do we continue to exceed the requirements? For instance, we are over the one mile on the yellow buses. I know we're going to continue to have bus services for high school students. We do not have to do that, but we will. That's, that's a commitment that this district has done for a very long time in, in the name of equity. And I, I'm fully in support of that. But something that we can consider, do we exceed that one-mile range if it's too costly in the future? So just those key decisions at the bottom, we would love to have your feedback on. And we will continue to engage with Board Committee to get feedback as well.
That's great. I had one last question, and then we'll, we'll come back to, very quickly. The, just to preview one question I'll have when, when we do look at the final proposal, I think is, how hard should we be pushing, if, if hard at all, on the restoration of some of the extra? And I don't, I don't actually need an answer to that today. I just, it's my mask. I'm sorry. By the time we get to the final proposal, one question I want to be able to talk about with you all is, should, how hard should we be pushing for some restoration of some of those extra routes? And again, not necessarily for tonight, but just, that's an ongoing question in my mind. Yeah. So thank you. So I think, anybody who's not gone yet, have anything they want to share? Okay.
Just can you repeat that, what you just said? I didn't hear the last part. I heard restorations, but I didn't hear anything else.
Yeah, I'm just getting a straight F on my mask this evening. I apologize. I think there's, what I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand how hard we as board members should be pushing politically to make sure that there are extra routes. Like, does that mean we need to be having conversations with the City Council, the mayor of the county about who the trustees are and what they're backing or not backing so that we get extra routes for students or not? What I want to be really clear, I'm not saying I think we absolutely have to. But I would love an opinion from the administration on whether we should be doing. Because I, I, I want us to look at all options we have on the table to provide the best possible services for kids and families. That was, is that helpful?
Yes, thank you.
Vice President Jones?
Oh my gosh, my thoughts are mush now. But I think as Board Member Bolton was saying, and I think Superintendent Ahmad also is saying, is that we're vetting this, these suggestions in the committee. So a lot of that is coming. I think in order for us to move forward, I think what everybody's saying is legitimate in terms of what we're looking for. But I think what we haven't seen, I haven't seen at least, is sort of big picture of what all these things cost us. What did they cost? What, you know, what will they cost in the future? Break all that down. When you talk about leveraging support for that, that's going to take time. But where are the points that, that we feel like we might have some success? I don't get the sense, and I'm not saying it won't happen, but I don't get the sense that City Council can offer us much, maybe accept a phone call to the Metro or something. But are the county commissioners to be involved? So I think a lot of these kinds of questions, the committee, Transportation Committee could probably help us with that. So the big picture for me is, what do all these scenarios look like if we were to cost all of them out? And, and then have that discussion presented as a recommendation here so the full board can, can respond to that. That's what's, that's the only thing that's missing for me, is that big-picture scenario. I don't know that I'm as optimistic about the, the, having people in the community. I don't know if I'm that optimistic, but I'm willing to look at that if it makes sense.
I would just add, we will have everything to the board that March, April timeline because you can't really make an informed decision without cost. And everything is relying upon that optimization study, which will be passed today. And the Treasurer's hopefully passed today in the Treasurer's report so that we can hire the company to start the work. Yeah, and then we will have that information.
So thank you for that. I think in mentioning the Treasurer's report, I do want to try to move us forward. It's almost 5:30. Any last, very, very short questions, minute or less, from Ms. Bolton and Ms. Wannah?
No question, but in response to the Superintendent answers from us, at least on the bottom order here, I don't see a will on the part of the board to change the distance piece. I really don't. That's just me speaking. But I, after, after all this disaster, as much as it would be one way to save, I, I would assume that we would still like to exceed state minimums. I would also assume that unlike other places, that we continue to provide free transportation by subsidizing it, paying for it. Those are two big areas where we could save money, but I don't see the will to do that from the board. I think you're right to say we want to partner with Metro. I'd like it to be more on our terms than theirs, and we'll have to figure out how to do that as the Vice President has spoken. And I do think the seventh and eighth grade piece is a piece that is, is a winner, especially if there's choice, or there's some families that would like them to be on Metro, maybe because they do athletic stuff or tutoring or something like that. But those, to me, and I think there is great interest in having an affordable, reliable, small fleet of both the yellow bus and vans if we, if it's at all affordable and does improve our quality and our option.
Okay.
And just to copy off of President Lindy, just to kind of respond to Board Member, Vice President Jones, it is very important, I think we do need to know the amount. We need to know a budget of what we're looking for in order to, you know, really make a decision March and April. Just to add my personal opinion, I do think it probably still may be possible to have that conversation with City Council and with the county. I think sometimes doing something a little different and maybe seeing what they have to offer. If we don't try that avenue, we don't know what will happen. So I would like to still probably keep that into, into the works.
Yeah.
That's great. Thank you very much. Okay, so 30 seconds?
Okay, so 30 seconds?
Hey, my 30 seconds is, I think, I'd like to see what it, what the impact of the students would be if we did the minimum versus what we do if we had current. So I would like to see the numbers of the impact on the mileage currently. And then the, I mean, the minimum, what the state is saying that we have to do versus the impact of what we currently do. Because I kind of want to see, would the numbers be that big that we would be looking at? I think we can effectively partner with Metro. We've got an offer from the City Council to what can we do? So I think we should definitely, most definitely explore that and be creative. I want to implore you guys, be creative. I think we should definitely say, "Hey, we could use $2 million," or whatever, you know? But we need to, we need to never take money or the offer of potential money off the table. I think that the 7th and 8th grade, they need to be separate, if possible. There's a bunch of different social, emotional stuff going on with them as far as maturation. And I think the yellow buses, from what I'm hearing in the schools, with Board Member Weinberg, is that that would really significantly help if the 7th and 8th graders were on yellow buses. So that's what we're hearing in the community. And I would also like to see the numbers with regard to a fleet. Is that feasible? For me, it's all about numbers and the impact of students. I want to see how many students are impacted if we do something different? How many students are impacted if we stay the same?
Great. Thank you very much, Dr. Moffett. I apologize if I was rushing you. I'm trying to move multiple things at once, and I apologize. I think, we'll transition in a sec to the Treasurer's report. I think, part of the reason I said the thing about role clarity earlier is I think you can hear how many different and strong opinions we all have. I think you can tie yourself in knots trying to do everything for every Board member. And so I hope you feel empowered to put forward for us, having heard all of these things, the plan you think is the best plan. And people will vote yes or no. And I think, we appreciate all of your hard work. So we'll transition then to the Treasurer's report. We have a revised Treasurer's report, as I understand it. Is there a motion to pass the Treasurer's report? Is there a second?
Second, Dr. Moffett.
Any discussion? Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, I have a question on, was it page four? But it's under Roman numeral one, and it's letter C, Air Force One. Good movie, but I need to...
That's not how you're getting to the Super Bowl?
Yeah. This, it's to, it's to provide Iowa Building free VRF renovation.
So Air Force One is a heating, ventilation, air conditioning organization. I don't know about the specifics of the project. I don't know, Ms. Lannoy can answer that?
My real question is, and I don't think this is a surprise to the public, but I know that the Iowa Street building has been of interest in the marketplace. I know that the Iowa Building, if, if there is something that, as we look at our capital possessions, I would, I'm really concerned about necessarily spending that amount of money unless we're making a commitment to stay there that long. I, I'm sure it needs it. And I know people are working hard there, but I hate to spend that if, if indeed, we're going to have that at any time in the near future generate some revenue for us. So I'd really like to delay this if we could.
Connie, are you familiar with the renovations going on at Iowa? That is the question.
Yes, thank you. But I...
Let's see, Roman... I don't know what it is in the...
What page? I have it on page five. It's of the PDF, it's page four in the document. It's item C.
So I think they're making phone calls. But while we're doing that, I wanted to alert you that I've been asked to pull Roman numeral seven, which is a word of contract, so that is the curriculum, that signs curriculum adoption. But Emily had attempted to pull it, I think because of the snow closings, the messages to get through. So her plan is to bring it back to the Board for approval on February 28th. So if you'll note that Roman numeral seven is being removed from the Treasurer's report.
A friendly amendment.
They're, they're under negotiations. When Ms. Lannoy was up here, I stepped out to call Emily to get clarification. She asked that if they remove for tonight.
That sounds great. On the item that Eve referenced, do you all recommend that we figure this out now?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? I didn't hear you.
I was just wondering if anybody had an answer for Ms. Bolton's question? Great, thank you very much.
Perhaps we can ask other questions, answer other questions that you have?
Yeah, so I think Ms. Bolton has come a couple others.
Yeah, just a verification from the Treasurer. All these transportation items are for the end of this year. This has nothing to do with next fiscal. I mean, they all have the June 30th, 22.
Correct. Yes, this is to finish out the school year.
Great. And then my, my last one is, I'm interested, no, I can pass that one if that's not as much. I'm on the Roman numeral five, K, letter K. It is something here about Grad Cincinnati, Resource Coordination Manager at the CCC Center. What's the, is that a... I usually think of resource coordinators at schools, you know, community learning centers.
Good evening. I think I have a little bit of information about that. This is actually a project that started last school year and was approved at that time. But because we had the Transportation Department in 1A, we are just now getting to the point to move forward with that College Career and Community Center, which has a goal of helping our young people. Say they went off to college and they came back after a quarter or semester. They need some additional assistance with college and career opportunities.
So is this person, this is a person that's going to be running it, or...
Yes, so it's going to be a contract service through Grad, will not be a CPS employee.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions while we're getting an answer on the Iowa Street? Okay, so I think we have a choice point here. We can either, there's a motion on the floor that's been seconded. We can pass that and take a vote on it. We can withdraw it, and some, oh, here comes Ms. Lannoy. That's great. Thank you so much.
I had an answer for you, and not guess. So yes, that's to upgrade the HVAC system in Iowa, sorely needed. And we do have quite a few employees there. And just to let you know what Ms. Murphy just said about A1, we moved that call center over to Iowa Street. So we have increased staff there. And so, just like how we did in all of our other buildings, we want to make sure our HVAC systems are up to speed with providing, you know, clean, healthy air. So that is what that, what that is for.
That's great. Thank you so much. Any other discussion? Okay, Ms. Wagner, would you call there, please?
Ms. Bolton?
Yes, except, what was it, the Roman numeral something or other?
The vendor you were just talking about, the Air Force One?
Yes, and also no on the Grad Cincinnati, which was five and K.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Check my notes for a second. I believe, having no other business before us, I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.